It is six o'clock, we call the meeting to order. The first end of business, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, remind that the meeting is being recorded in live stream. If you have phones, please put them to silent. And with that, we will open for an election of chair nominations, please.
I'll nominate Matt for chair.
Are there any other nominations for chair? Seeing none, I'll close nominations. All those in favor of Matt for chair? Those both abstained. Four zero one. Mr. Chair, the meeting is yours.
Okay, we're on. I guess we'll dive into the election of a vice chair.
Nominate Lindsay Lynch.
Best chance. For sure. Motion second, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor?
We not vote for ourselves, because I'll vote for myself.
That's everybody, you certainly can. Reviewing from the minutes of March first.
Move to approve.
Second, move to the second to approve the minutes of March first. Any discussion?
We're using a different font this year, huh?
Seeing none, all those in favor? We'll review and approve the minutes of the two thousand twenty-three town meeting. I've got a chance to review. Is there a second one? Okay, motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that is everybody.
Well, I should abstain since I wasn't there. Maybe for now.
Just voted for yourself.
Well, that's.
You don't have to abstain.
I just.
Okay, number four, so I'll start reviewing.
Vote for this one, sir. No. The relative flow of each meeting is the same, the agenda will be issued. There's a time in each meeting for you to bring forward your concerns, whether they're personal concerns or constitutional concerns or anything like that. That's this time now, I'll follow up, we'll get through our regular business. At the end of every meeting on another business category, so if there's something that you would like actually taken on or anything else that's not on the agenda, you can do that at that point in time too. So often times it gets talked about under this section, and if there's a business portion, ask about it under that section.
So we'll dive in with you.
The only thing that I got is I keep getting it again and again, is at Mill Street in the parking lot, getting it and out, and like the snow removal just not happening. So I know it's technically not us, but in the same sense, it's becoming more and more troublesome with all this. Kelsey. I don't have any.
And I don't have anything, so we'll go right to the town meeting.
As was mentioned, the last time, the high school's organizing a community service project, that date has changed to the May twelfth, and they've also just asked for it to be publicized, so private-public combination. If you have any projects that you'd like to be considered, please just let us know here at the office and launch to the list. Out to the airport, we're working with a consultant to try to adjust the priorities, we've talked about this briefly before, but with the snow removal equipment, we're going to be able, I think, to buy just the standalone snow blower instead of the whole carrier vehicle that we were talking about, so that should be a huge cost savings for us. But with that happening, we're also looking to move up the design and permitting for taxi lanes on the north side, which is you drive in, it's to the right by the Morgans, big hangar, just in the on. So we're working on that to try to finalize some things there with FAA and DOT. I do have a business item related to that, so I'm not taking up too much time, but things are moving there. We just haven't had anything really tangible. Old LD two ninety, that was the property tax stabilization program for seniors. That is a program that probably isn't going to make it through the year. It was probably best put an election year bill, and we fully expect it to not exist in its same form this next year, but it has been a popular program here, there's four pieces of proposal legislation on the table tomorrow for hearing. You can tune into those online with the taxation committee, but they're talking about getting away from it altogether. They're talking about creating a senior homestead extension that would just instead of the twenty-five thousand, it could make it fifty or seventy-five thousand different options like that. So we're going to continue to keep an eye on that, we submit testimony on that kind of stuff on a regular basis, primarily through MMA, but we're watching that. Build Maine is a two-day event in Skowatka. They were there last year, this will be the second final year, I believe, in Skowatka, where they talk about economic development opportunities, encouraging that public-private partnership relationships, showcasing best practices for people involved in building Maine, people starting businesses, organizations, things like that. It's a good exposure opportunity for us, the sponsorship is six hundred dollars. I've tentatively committed us to doing that, just from the exposure perspective, being in the neighborhood. But I am going to refer that to TIF committee for their meeting in a couple of weeks to ask them to consider funding that from their funds.
Is that the event that took place in what's going to be the Globe Arena last year?
That's where it was last year, it's moving to a different area this year, but yeah. That's where it will be, so I have more information about that, but before I really bring it here, I want to make you aware of it, but I'm going to send it to Tiff and ask that sort of funding. Sewer links are going tomorrow, it says nineteen, not twenty, it's actually nineteen. Mary Burr, local Irish from Ormer Mercer, she'll be at the library this Saturday at ten thirty to talk about her trip to Italy, and she painted. It's a long day, her honor to showcase there for a little over a month. Book club meet, it's on the twenty-ninth, Amy Calder from Morning Sentinel has written about it, she'll be at the library on April first. And then anything to do with library events and programming, whether it's participation or wanting to program with us, get ahold of Robin at the library, please. Your proposals for Boiler, the fire station, last meeting, they had an up to twenty thousand for replacement. We reached out to contractors, two contractors came back with timely responses, that was Fabian and A. Robinson. Fabian came in at eighty-seven hundred dollars, A. Robinson proposed an equal replacement or a replacement with two smaller ones, so there was some sense of backup there. Fabian came in at eighty-seven hundred, and then you have twelve and thirteen thousand for A. Robinson's. We signed contract with Fabian oil. And we're expecting that to be installed next week, so the timeline's moving. Also, you have the fifteen-year warranty on the heat exchange and five-year on parts, so a little bit better than where we are on this current one. But nonetheless, that is moving. I received a newsletter today from MMBank, who's our insurance partner, and they have pretty much a broken equipment insurance policy that's automatically included in our insurance. So I filed this thing on Boiler today, and they're going to send somebody out to inspect it and hopefully pay for the replacement Boiler at the fire party. But not sure yet.
It's too bad it doesn't cover Asia.
We'll see how that plays out, but it sounded optimistic, it really sounded good, so. And then your rack sign-ups for T-ball, baseball, softball are open now online. Deadline sign-up, there's March thirty-first, and just ahead of the warrant, we're paying a little of salt, two loads of salt. We are year-to-date one load, season-to-date one load left on salt.
Oh, really, so we're still less than two. It's good.
I just have a random question, I mean, I don't know if there's any flexibility.
Thirty percent. More.
For, I saw that the date was changed for the, because of the high school that's going to come and do community service, is there any way to try to coordinate that with the field day that we typically have to do? I know that's something that we are always, you know, scrambling for volunteers for her.
It's not coordinated with the field day, but we're coordinating tasks that might be done by field day with.
That'd be great, just to take some of it off of.
Obviously, if they're seniors in the community or whatever, we prioritize them, but that's on the radar as a.
Awesome, I just figured if someone's looking to volunteer and like, we.
Correct, we need paint and things like that.
Yes, we see we have a bunch of painting.
Yeah.
Review approve the minutes of, oh, I'm sorry, discussion action on March fifteenth.
I move to approve general warrant number six in the amount of two hundred and two thousand five hundred and ninety-five thousand and fifty-three cents.
Motion second, any discussion?
Yep, so these are the bills we pay, we pay bills twice a month at each meeting. The first one is usually a lighter bill that we pay, the second warrant of each month pays the school. And so the school budget here for this month is a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, that's a recurring payment, just through the twentieth of each month. These are all the bills that we're paying for the tunnel except for the airport, so if you have any questions about them, we can draw right down, we can fax the invoice to you if you need.
What's the RHR smithing company?
It's an auditing firm.
Okay, how often do we have to pay for that?
We pay usually four or five progress payments.
Okay.
So it'll be just under ten thousand, I think, this season.
And what was Stanley's?
Stanley's, all slugs to Anthony Madison.
Okay, so that, just that. Okay, anything else on the discussion, will move?
We also post these online under the minutes section, all the materials that are coming due today for the warrant is there to get questions asked.
Okay, so you know the session, all those in favor? That's everybody. And we move to our discussion action on March fifteenth.
To approve the airport warrant in the amount of fourteen thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty one cents.
Second. Motion second, any discussion?
Yes, so will we have any reimbursement for the final professional service taxi reconstruct? Like, is all of that our responsibility, or is that that third three thousand?
No, that's the total, so we're going to get ninety-five cents.
Okay, that's, all right. Is this one month, or what, specifically? Now that's, we put in the heat pumps, is like the oil, the heating's less than it was last year, since we did that, or not?
I couldn't, I couldn't give you the straight answer on that, we can look into it. I know electricity is crazy across the board, I looked in the deck before, we just signed a sewer power bill, it was a little over six thousand dollars.
Just curious, since we did that, if that was going to offset one.
Everything is off, usage is off everywhere across the board on electric, I can take a look at our usage for.
If we're using the heat pumps more, like I get that the electric bill will go off, so hopefully, we're not keeping.
It's like the lights on the runway and everything, right? That idea, that would be equal of last year, the only difference is that you click in and turn those lights on.
I just want to see if like our oil bill is down because we're using the heat pumps for.
Why are we getting any savings out of it?
Yeah, just see like what the return on that investment was, like that ten billion or whatever. Just, I mean, not a huge, just curious.
Because I think CP just put in two for proposed increases over the next three years. Fairly significant ones over what we just did.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's everybody.
I move to approve the sewer commitment in the amount of twenty-five thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and thirty cents.
Second, you want to walk through that, what they're actually approving.
Yeah, so the second meeting of every month, we commit sewer use. This is provided to us by the water district, they have to use it, so we have our base charge plus consumption. This always calculated and billed up, they're all sitting in the vaults up front. It's a pretty much a formality that you commit to the treasurer, the obligation to collect the sewer use. If they go unpaid after twelve months, then we'll go through the process, which tomorrow will file on unpaid year-old sewer use charges. So this is pretty much a formality, but included every week, you'll have a list of current bills, past due bills, every meeting you commit, you'll have that.
Okay, so there's a motion in a second, any further discussion? For the just.
It's okay.
So, all those in favor? And that's everybody. Public comment? Anything from the public out there?
I think we have a meeting to do for a little. I've got something I want to run by, I know you can hold for it. I won't bring it up tonight.
All right, well, anytime, sir.
Yeah.
Anytime, say.
I mean, you've got a floor to yourself now, I mean, like this is.
No one put me up for it, I'm just myself.
Okay, discussion action on important. First off is the school board director, we got all kinds of interesting write-ins.
Yeah, so at every town meeting, you'll have the school board vacancy, a sewer commissioner vacancy, and a budget committee vacancy. The vacancy for the planning board existed before town meeting, based on a resignation that happened in the window between when papers could go out and come back in. So we received quite a few applications on the planning board, because the window has been open for longer, and we had a lot of stuff going on with the planning board. The school board position, you had writing candidates that were tied, and then no one was awarded. There was somebody that was successful on the school board that declined with the four votes. The sewer commissioners had vacancy all along, and we just haven't been able to get anybody, even the sewer commission director, that's why we asked them, sewer commission. And then the budget committee, the vacancy left open by town meeting, and Jim Lyman has reached out and said, nobody else is interested, he's interested. So you have those applications in your packet from anybody that has submitted an application or letter of request. You can afford, you know, half the point, but we have all the paperwork to find whatever you like.
On the paper, on the vacancies. I can get a few of the names there, I don't know. Everybody else knows, I don't know how, where, everybody is.
I don't know, what name, but the school board, I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I know, I'll bring the names for the school board seat. Just make a recommendation of the two that.
Yeah, if you could move them, sorry, please.
Okay, so I move to approve or appoint Cheyenne Goodrich to the school board director's position.
Second, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's four, and one abstaining.
I'd like to put Janice Malick on consideration before appointment to the school board director.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And again, that's four, one abstaining.
Who was that?
Janice, Joe Manis' wife. Excellent, that would be great, actually, yeah.
This one had more applications than. For, is there anyone who has any sort of background?
Cheyenne and Jeremy.
Yeah, and I know Jim Langmaster is also, recently back to town, but lived here for a long time, really good people.
I mean, she's going to head out, she had a pretty flat case of a resume.
Yeah, and this one doesn't have the. On one project with the town, that really puts a factor. You know what I mean?
I'm just like, I'm trying to see if like, does anyone have like any sort of like, you know, work-life experience that might make them like an additional asset to. Anybody have any other feeling?
I don't know any of them. Some are already started, Jean. Pretty like full application that looks like, I think, it's all experience and a farm history, being part of the farm drop community, so interesting.
Can I say something? Waterway, Chuckie, I think Dean would be an excellent choice. Time, go with everybody.
Advice coming from a member of the planning board, I think that we appoint Jim Langpasser to the planning.
Is my hour? No, that's perfect, Jimmy, thank you for asking. That's ideal. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's everybody. Sewer commissioners, there's nobody there, and you don't have any additional names, you're right, that's unfortunate.
Then I move that we appoint James Lyman to the budget committee.
Second, motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody, excellent.
Just as a reminder, these are all elected positions, so they do expire at town meeting next year. Even if it's the balance of a three-year term, they still expire next town meeting.
Even dreams?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, you're going to do that at the June meeting?
We're hopefully, hopefully not going to need a town meeting in June, just going to be school budget. The action on two thousand twenty-three community project funding grant agreement. So this here is the start of the congressionally-directed spending allocation that we're receiving, the two and a half million dollars for the roadway river preservation. This is an intensive program administratively. One of the things I'm going to ask you to consider down the line, I reached out to them today, is to have somebody like KB Call, the council of governments, who has experience of that administration, be responsible for administering the grant, so that all of our paperwork's getting filed appropriately. We're not missing out on anything. Just a ballpark number, but if it costs us twenty-five thousand out of the two and a half million dollars, I think it's a pretty responsible use of the money to make sure that everything's getting filed. But with that being said, the first tranche of paperwork that needs to get done is pretty significant, and this is part of it, and I'm going to just do this myself. And I need your authorization for me to sign the five by twenty-three community project funding grant agreement.
So do we have to put it into approval before we can comment on it, or?
Motion second.
Motion that we move forward with the community project funding grant agreement.
Second, motion second, any further discussion?
I have a question, I know that when we've had money, the funding that's come for the airport, it kind of tied us into other things and made it so that we had to do certain things, is this going to put us in the same position where there's like certain upkeep that we have to do, or we lose the funding, or there's like terms on this that's like, is there anything like the airport looking up?
No, this is, it's pretty much, it's upfront obligations, it's the environmental studies, it's the permit and all of that, where it is. This is hub money, is really where they're pulling it from, ironically enough, housing nervousism is what they're sending to rural America, but we're going to take it. And right now, what we're looking at, just so we're all clear, is the foul road stabilization project, the Sandy River Road stabilization project, very likely the Wilder Hill Road sectioned by the cemetery. And then maybe a Wade Street, or maybe we look at the Bigelow Hill Surface Project, that last that is going to be left up to real of the road advisory when Jeff gets back into town. So, but that's what we're looking at for funding allocation.
Okay, but there's no language in there that if we did the father role, or we did that, that we would have any sort of onus on us, like ten years, so I'd have to keep doing something or have to have, I just want to make sure we're.
Not what I'm aware of, not that I'm aware of, obviously the town would be all exhausted, but there are roadways. So if it was a daily street, like, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
But, okay.
Good. All right, motion second, all those in favor? And that's everybody. Excellent, I think that was wise to do. Discussion action on airport project cost events.
Yep. So this ties back into the shifting of projects, where we talked about the acquisition of snow removal equipment carrier vehicle and attachments.
I was just going to say, this doesn't look like your.
So what the goal would be is to, we're trying to get them to pay for that design and permanent phase of the taxi lanes on the right side as you drive it. In order to do that right now, if it's approved by FAA, the state says we don't have the money to fund your grant this year. We won't have it until next year, which still makes us eligible, but we would have to hold back on that money for a year. So it's, you know, it could be fifty grand that we would take out, we would pay, and then when that funding was approved under the next DOT budget, then we would be reimbursed.
Are we obligated to have to do that runway, or not?
It's a taxi way.
Taxi way, do we have to do it, like?
No, that's the next project priority that the advisory set, so it's fully funded, minus the five percent. The state's just asking, would ask us to hold the five percent until they get into their budget cycle to reimburse us.
And one of the chances that they cut out of that fifty, right, in their budget cycle?
Doesn't, it's not.
It's right.
They put it in writing that we will not be.
We're operating on by any budget, so it's budgeted. And they're all in the mix, it's transportation dollars.
How, how did you get to this point now, like, was the money there? That's why we started, now the money's not.
Because they fixed the money to the snow removal equipment, this is government. They fixed the money to snow removal, and they cannot reclassify that money from storm removal equipment into the design permit. Regulations of the state don't let them, so the money's there, the money that they were going to spend on us is still there, but because we're cutting back, trying to cut back the snow removal equipment, just to the snow blower, and save money, they don't, won't allow us to proceed with the next project, because it wasn't slotted until next year. So that's kind of where we're at right now, we're trying to get the FAA on board. It's just I needed to hear the indicators to whether or not that was going to be acceptable to the threshold of that cost per year. We have funds.
I don't personally see a problem, I mean, it's the state, and it's the airport, it's.
I'm just, just wondering if, you know, if it's something that's absolutely necessary to do, if it's because something isn't functional, what the return on that investment's going to be, I mean, adding that in, what is that gain for us? Because I know that we're just talking about the town's money, but it's not just, it's all our taxpayer money, we're, we spend a lot there, and, you know, we do hemorrhage money at the airport, it's not making any money, so like, what is this taxi way going to do for the airport, like?
Right.
It's not going to make any money, I'm assuming, right?
Right, so it actually provides access, the taxi line provides access for the planes to be able to get one to the taxi, taxi lane into the runway.
They must be able to do that now, because they're flying, right?
Right, but it.
Down the road, is it going to cost us more if we don't go? Oh, yeah, because it's state money.
Yeah, so it'll cost us more, and just with inflationary measures. The goal here is to be able to break it up so that we're, we're sure ready for next year, so that we have the design permit done this year, and then next year, we're ready to go to market with it, as opposed to having to put it in the next year's project, which it's it's in essence rewarding the airport for being good stewards of the money by saying, we don't want a whole snow removal equipment package, we just want the snow blower, which then allows them to start with another project ahead of schedule.
That project's going to get done anyway, correct? Most likely, at some point, we're going to have to do.
It's right on the priority list to get done.
Right.
It's on the top of their remaining priority list. Not the surefire thing to get done, but that's obviously what the advisory committee would like, and that's what the face. Federal aviation administration, so when we have major projects up to the airport, they pay ninety percent of the cost. The state pays five, and we pay five percent.
And they dictate about a hundred percent of what you can do.
Well, because we've taken all their money, that's where my question before came from, we have to keep doing other stuff, so it's like, we took their money, but now we have to keep spending more, and five percent doesn't seem like that much, but, you know, none of the projects are like a three thousand dollar project, they're all gigantic, and it's something that basically bleeds money for time.
I know, I'm not the one, it's the taxi way. I mean, I've been down there, that's pretty, pretty long.
I don't have my CIP right now, honestly, you're probably looking at three hundred thousand and fifty on engineering.
So three hundred and fifty thousand, and we still have to come up with, and we can't get out of not doing that because of the FAA, because of the other stuff.
We can, the FAA obligation doesn't require you to continue to do other projects at the airport. The FAA obligation requires you to maintain for a period of time the investment that they've made, it depreciates over X period of time. So I learned last week, a fence lasts you twenty years, after twenty years, they'll pay for whole fence, those kinds of things. Or circumstances change, and for safety reasons, or whatever, they might branch to an exception.
Now, they digging this up, or they just reach certain, oh, no, it'll be engineered, so it'll be done.
So what are they going to do in the interim, do they have a second taxi way, and that's how they're going to?
So these are, I should have meant, but no. This is where their hangers, so it's just a driveway in between rows of hangers. So it'll affect probably thirty hangar owners, this project. Whereas you've got somebody who's to drive through the gate in the morning.
She's asking a question and getting a no.
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, half the one opened up the doors for us, we, for the first time in ten years, just got like their hangar fees like up. I mean, I feel like the airport's plenty functional, like, if you get a little bumpier ride from your private hangar to the what's five percent of three hundred and fifty thousand? Just feels excess for something, when you think of an investment, there is zero return on this. None of the people there are going to stop having their hangar there and sell. None of the people there are gonna stop having their hangar there and sell them because it doesn't get done. We're not bringing in new people because it's paid, so all we're doing is just spending more money at airport, like it just, we just keep losing money.
It's tough, I mean, do you let it fall into disrepair, or do you let it set for multiple years so that it's more, or that we don't have those matching funds? It's tough, I, I'm certainly not.
And it's not like, it's not the runway, it's the taxi, so it's like, it's not required for aviation for it to be a super smooth ride, because people can take off from a field, so I mean, it's a, it's a nice to have, not a need to have, is all I'm trying to say for we're just, we spend a lot of money and everything's more expensive, like, we've got to prioritize, is this the most important thing we need to be spending our money on, and I, and I get it, we get the ninety percent and we get the five, so it's a good deal, but it's not a good deal if we just keep dumping it.
If you let the state troops give them a free year, they can pay our portion.
I don't know, it's just something that I think we need to think about. You know, it's one thing when it's a safety of like a pilot's committee, something on that runway, absolutely to ask, but this seems like a, that may get a little bit more bougie for me, instead of I just think that we need to think about those things, whether it's a hundred dollars or if it's ten thousand dollars, before we spend taxpayer money on something that so few people, how many hangers we have, thirty, thirty people?
Fifty.
Okay, and they all, I mean, some of them haven't even, they, we were told last time that there were things, a tree growing in front of us, we know that not all of them even use it, so we're spending this money for such a small population of probably not even more to a taxpayer, so that's.
It's mixed, but it, it's, it's valid, I really, what you're saying is valid.
Except they're all taxpayers.
Oh, right.
So we're, we're deciding if we should cover it, right, the five percent of this?
Of the design and permit phase, not the construction.
But are you kind of the majority should we do that in general?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I'm always like the jerk about the airport because I always am looking at how much this costs us, what we get as like a benefit to the town, and I always come up, we're in. It's angry happy, but.
Always has been, I don't wanna say it always will be, uh, but it comes back to that long-term plan for the airport.
Which we don't have, they don't.
Yeah, I'm not gonna ask.
It's really in us, I guess, the board, I mean, there is a board below us, the import advisor committee is the one who is familiar with the airport and the the ins and outs and their long-term plan, as to whether we need to have them come in and sit with us so that we can discuss and really get on the same page as them. This is really just, you know, you know, at our meeting, we're just like, okay, this is where we like to go next.
The, the long-term plan for the airport is to maintain, this, this, to say that we're gonna blow it up and it's gonna be some economic development engine relying on ourselves. We are not in a position four miles off of Route Two to be able to compete with water or a best, it's just far too convenient, so we have to start telling ourselves that. But you do have the value that's in the airport and the advisory committee is, is tied to making sure that what they do isn't wasteful, and it's a direct impact to aviation and safety, as opposed to other projects that maybe aren't. So I, I, I'll give them that, I don't think that this proposal's unreasonable. Uh, if, if we're not willing to invest to maintain the access for them, I think you're gonna have calls for uh, us violate in our lease, our end of the lease in terms of them being able to access.
But how long before we write that would be at that point? I mean, some cracks in the pavement, I mean, are we ten years away from?
Do you wanna go for a tour of the airport?
I've been at a tour at the airport.
Okay, let's go. Uh, the hangar rows that we're talking about are in dire need of repair.
Okay.
They were approved for construction three years ago, but we did down through, uh, to the left. I just go through the gate, we did all the way down through that, they scraped it off the top because of project cost, and we didn't have the entitlement funds for that. They scraped it off, come to find out after the happen with COVID, they ended up paying a hundred percent, so if we'd have left it there and committed to it locally, we would have had it paid for.
So we've already kicked the can down, Lord ones.
About this. A hangar owner or a plane owner that accesses from that area is not wrong to complain about the condition of it. And I've been comping tie-downs out there for those people for two or three years.
Uh, yes, you don't need a motion.
No, no, I need to be addressed the piece in place, I just didn't wanna push those.
Oh, you just want the general consensus that would be.
I didn't, couldn't afford to push the pieces in place, but. Well, it worked, push.
Yeah.
I'm not asking questions about how I was getting money, then, not who I'm supposed to.
But I, I know, it does go back to.
And I would love a tour and to like learn more, I, whether financially it's a great asset, I do find it to be a great asset of the town. And so like when that annual survey came out, if people wanted the airport highlighted, so I think it's something that we find value in, and so I'd wanna learn more and check it out.
So the advisory, we're still working to get on the same page for the few things that they've got up in the air, and then once they have the next meeting, I'll see if we can get on the.
Yeah. She'll be all, uh, look at the long-term plan for the airport. They go easy report. Okay, uh, just because, you know, we like to spend money here, uh, just. New public works, drug purchase.
All right.
Next, that's sixteen, so should have watched him years ago, you know, that's.
What did he, can you put a letter, isn't this right big enough, is what we paid for the last ones?
No, I think we paid a hundred seventy-five each. Each.
Is this more truck or just more expensive for the?
More expensive.
Did we get correctly though, that we're replacing a four wheeler with a truck?
Oh, uh, no, it's just a smaller. It's a, yeah, it's not a full-size wheel or truck, it's a smaller version.
Okay.
Barely.
It's a, it's a single axle, right?
Gotcha.
Yes, Willis is here for public.
Probably knows.
Willis knows, it's like plowstorm, the truck's down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so I had fully intended to bring this to you and ask for a decision tonight, so this is gonna be based upon your comfort level. Um, you can see down the second to last row talks about delivery. And so we've been about a month without a truck now, this is the truck that we decided not to repair that after town meeting, we're gonna circle back if we have the appropriations, um, and consider purchasing. So this has not been formally bid out, uh, I had Joe reach out to vendors and tell them what our current truck looks like and ask them to bid us a call, and so I went through the, really, the mile high in terms of your suspension, things like that, they're important for a plow truck, your engine transmission and warranties, um, to pull together, you know, pretty much what we've got, hard fat pumps, and then it's just a matter of the price and delivery.
What are, are we driving freight liners right now?
We, yes, all but the one dimensional, it just went down.
Okay, so other than that, everything is a freight liner?
Yeah. One fourteen and two seventeen.
And what ti, are these all freight liners from all these different companies?
No, no, each one, but the, the second row.
Western, okay, there we go. Do any of them have a better warranty or like ease of serviceability? Like, if something breaks, who's closest that can actually fix, I mean, if we get something that's a better deal, but it's gonna go to Portland to get fixed every time, like?
So the advantage on that one goes to O'Conners and Augusta, other than that, you go to Auto and Bangor.
Okay.
What comes on currently, would we currently go to Bangor?
Yeah.
Well, it looks like that one's cheaper anyways, I mean, that's just something you have to think of, if something breaks and it is under warranty, like, it's, you know.
Right, and your, your warranties are pretty comparable, there are extended coverages that just weren't included for the purpose of what they were proposing, um, for us to handle, we were still filling gaps in this chart this afternoon.
Is there a preference, uh, as far as workers go, Western Star?
That's what I was gonna say, as well as.
I mean, we're all freight liners, do we like freight liners, do we wanna stay in freight liner, do we hate freight liners and don't want anymore?
Yeah, the availability of, the availability of the truck would be the biggest question.
Really?
Not sure what it is, I know the one they was talking about, we could have it this fall, if, you know, it's ordered quick enough is what I heard.
Is, is there any interchangeability, I mean, if you're, all freight liners, can you take the gear off one and put on the other?
They all have parts, they all have like, you know, L nine cums for the most part, same, all, you know, they're all same motor, that's what I was just kinda looking at.
Right, I'm more about like the plow here and everything you currently have, or all your attachments that go on these trucks, I mean, if you have all freight liners, is everything the same, opposed to if you get into a hole, was it gonna be a completely different plow setup and different hydraulics and different cap switches? Opposed to if you're in a freight liner, is everything just the same, every truck is the same exact setup, there's no learning curve from going from this truck to the next truck? Or I don't even know how much that matters, because I don't.
The truck would be the difference, it'd be the, whoever put the equipment on, because like you got like HP Fairfield and you got Viking. Um, two of the freight liners are set up for HP and one's a Viking.
Really?
The two HPs will swap, I could pull in, take this dustpan and go if that truck was down or vice versa, but the, uh, the other one where it's a Viking is totally different, nothing will fit on our trucks, the other two.
See, and how many of a deal is that, you know what I mean, is it nice to be able to just swap stuff when stuff does go down, so you're like, oh, I forgot that truck, I can't use it and I can't take the parts off it? I just don't know how big of a deal that is, I mean.
Is it possible to like bounce this back to someone to have them look at it for their needs and?
So we have.
Okay, cut.
Four minutes this afternoon, obviously have employees that are interested to get here tonight. Um, it's really the balance of customary, and we've always taken, well, price.
Okay.
Very little session, uh, but then ties in the delivery factor. And I think the message of the department is we don't wanna go any longer than we have, partying on most of the season.
Yeah.
It looks like the cheapest one is also the quickest we can get, so I mean, kind of feels as long as it's the brand of truck, I mean, it's got the better serviceability, it comes the soonest and it comes the cheapest, I feel like it's checked all my boxes.
Is that the map?
No, that's the Western. Well, it's, it's not the cheapest, it's four thousand dollars.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Financial corners, I don't know.
Well, that one is, we don't know, unknown, like, it could have a delivery fee, that other one was cheaper, so that's what I was.
Uh, so are you like delivering and whatnot?
Yeah.
No, no, those, if those are blanked out on that lower end, there aren't any answers, yeah. It's all the way somewhere related now.
Is there a recommendation or to some highway?
Do you have recommendations of what you'd like to see?
A, a backup truck, that's. You know, like last night, just a little FYI, one of my trucks broke a chain sanding. We did one section of water till forty feet and broke, so now we had to pull another truck off, another route to run, and one day it was down a complete truck, two of us ran this town, we was spent at the end, but, you know, we was quite tired, you know, and run, 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 and then somebody else run, 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 and it's.
So you want it as soon as you can get it?
It'd be nice. No.
Is it something with budget coming in there?
Uh. Well, they, I don't know, I don't know what they have in their reserve accounts, uh, about two hundred and seventy thousand, so they have, they do have funds on hand. Request a proof of exit.
No, that's why I didn't get to hit the warrant at town meeting, just because they had the amount in their reserve.
Yes, tough, I don't think why they did run, uh, certainly, such a large price tag.
Right, so the Connor one was the one you guys were talking about, correct?
Yeah.
Is that gonna be a plug and play for, did you say HP Fairfield, the one you guys had from HP was, you can swap? Yeah, and we got one, uh, Viking system too.
So it looks like, right, that O'Conners comes with Viking.
But they priced it with Viking, but it's not a stick for us to go to Viking.
Oh, really?
No, not with them, because HP offered us a standalone a gear only, and the gear only is ninety-seven, nine, nine, seven, which is what I actually put in there for price.
So you could technically.
So you could get the truck from O'Connor, sort of, do the bill.
And that's the, that's the delay, right, so the truck delivery is a queue three, so be a queue four for the C truck.
Right.
And then the hope is that, you know, we would get some value for the truck that we have, even though it's not running for us. Obviously with my trucks. I think that's a little bit of an opportunity. So you're gonna do, you?
Okay, oh, yeah, I mean, if everybody's coming to one, I mean. Like, hey, just jump in, it's about two hundred.
Is it the food tax, not that, I mean, five, five percent on the tax?
Oh, right, okay, yeah.
Uh, right, but it, it's funny there, that little caveat, you need in the motion, uh, the vendor for the attachments, whether you want the, uh, O'Conners and then HP Fairfield.
Mm-hmm.
So that's how you would like to see that.
Yeah, there are two separate proposals, so, okay.
Okay, so then I would move that we accept the bid for the twenty twenty-four Western Star forty-seven X from O'Connor with the caveat that we have, um, equipment contractor swap to HP Fairfield versus Viking.
Uh, do you need an overall amount with that? What did that do?
Um, if you wanted to do an up to two thirty?
In the amount of up to two hundred thirty thousand.
Okay, uh, motion is second, uh, any further discussion?
Just, I asked for more, uh, we may be able to negotiate here or there, but there might also be an option for extended warranty, physics extended warranty, we probably could take that, choose a preferred one, definitely contract.
Do we know what the cost is and if that two hundred thirty would cover that, or would we do that as a separate?
That's, I think the two hundred thirty should cover it, the extended warranty on your MAC involved was forty-five hundred bucks.
Okay. Just to know if we need to up the, up to amount if we were gonna look at good amount.
Do you dig with these guys at all? I mean, is this?
We can, uh, you don't usually have much success just because, well, with the market. Uh, but then you also get to government rate, so there are already, uh, manufacturer discounts for governments.
Okay, all right, more, uh, second, any more discussion on that? Someone will rest along, you have to trust us on this. Uh, I mean, by myself, I think it's important to get into a freight liner, uh, just because I'm kind of a stickler of everything being same, uh, but given the current states and that you want it and we want it this year or early in the next year, it's crazy that I had to wait that long, uh, so with it, there's no further discussion, uh, all those are favorable. And that's everybody. Yeah, I know, we, we have all the trucks now.
Is everything new now?
No, you're honestly, we're gonna be looking at probably another truck next year. The oldest one's fourteen, this was an old one, we're obviously late to the party, so we need to look to fund the truck next year so that we could get one in two or three years after now.
How, is that reserved on?
Not that way.
No, we'd be looking for probably a start plus allocation.
Okay.
Trucks, trucks, more trucks. We can't find a bogo. We bought chassis, we bought a chassis, we didn't buy a whole fire truck, we're gonna get another bill.
So I don't, that may be another piece to look at too, just so we can have that, these guys get to see that, uh, public works does have a master plan on all of their equipment and needs. I know, it might be nice for everybody to see that, just so you have, you know, it's coming back here.
The fire department always has a great, like, that's always a good model, I think.
Yes.
There's always kind of like, here's everything, here's like the urgency of it, the year that, like, if all the other departments look like that one, it'd be much easier to understand, but if you see that.
Yes, it would.
Totally integrated document, it's just not possible across all the departments.
Yeah.
That would be nice, all right, uh, review of select board policies and procedures.
Yeah, I'll do all of that. So, uh, for new members, you have your policies or you will have.
These are the things we did last time that we kind of like all went over?
Yes, so all the policies primarily are procedure and communication. Uh, procedure is pretty much you can come to me whenever you need anything, uh, if you use it, Matt will shut it down, and then you end up having to go through Matt, we've never had to do it. Uh, if you don't have the whole, help me.
Don't call me to that like seven.
If you have an issue with me, go to Matt, if I have an issue with you, I go to you, and if I can't feel it, if I don't feel it, you can, everything kind of goes through me. I think outside communications, that's all, and there's something about form or forms or whatnot. Uh, and then in, not in your packet, but yeah, somewhere in your space is a contact information sheet, and you just have your review of that and get that back to me, I appreciate it. Please keep in mind that emails are subject to freedom of access, uh, so if you're not comfortable with the good government sticking its hand into your email, you might wanna create a standalone one. And we're happy to do that, if you have any personal emails that you'd like messages sent to but not distributed to publicly, please note that as well. And then we will put that as written in our internal database.
I, if it makes, if it helps you guys at all, I created a new one that was just for like this. So that way. It was one thing that I looked to, like, give my stuff to Richard. It's all right there. And if someone gets it, it's not like what I use for, it was on shopping. It was. It was really Lindsay Lynch and then I used Nordwark zip code. It's like that easy. So.
The only other thing I guess would be we've tried to forge with it, but the press, press gets redirected to me and Matt.
Yeah, I'm staff.
Always. And obviously the relationship personnel are not pretty square.
Uh, discussion action on financial policy.
So these are renewed every, the first is a payroll policy. So we pay employees every Thursday still. Uh, this policy. Technically to pay everybody, you need their meeting. This policy grants somebody who's typically the chair. And another member who has a flexible schedule, the ability to come in and sign off on payroll to legally allow us to release that. It's customary. So it would typically be the motion to.
Motion to.
Sign and approve and appoint Matt and somebody else.
I don't undo any of it again.
Motion, yeah, point, let me. Just one appointment.
You just have to get texts until we just go on all our signs and stuff.
All right. So you've got motion, uh, seconds, motion of the second. Uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those are favor. And that's it.
All right, the second is the tax payment policy. This is a formality. Uh, that says your oldest taxes have to be paid first. Uh, in the window of notice. Um, ten days, ten, ten business days prior to the notice to lean or anything like that, when extra fees are gonna occur. We will only take bank checks, debit cards, certified checks, money, water, cash. Uh, we don't encourage our assistance to put things onto credit cards that they don't pay, uh, they don't have cash for. We're gonna charge eight percent interest, your credit card's probably gonna charge more. We also don't wanna get a personal check that's gonna bounce. And then you missed the new window. So that's pretty much the reason for this. Uh, the recommended motion is a motion to approve and sign the tax payment policy.
So.
Motion aside, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those are favor.
And the final one is the sewer payment policy, which gets counter signed on the sewer commission. And that is the same as the tax payment policy being, uh. Oldest must be paid first in the restricted window for, um, payments prior to collections.
All right, and will we accept the sewer payment policy for the time of work?
Okay, motion of the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those are favor. Other business. Just so everybody knows, I got my taxes paid. You know what I mean? If you miss that date, you will be. Is that the board having anything for other business? Anybody in the public have other business?
I just said, thank you for the truck. My oldest used one weekend for you.
He gets a second chance for whatever he wants.
No, no, I'll wait.
I know, he really likes a week.
Okay, uh, yeah, Richard, what do you have?
Uh, could I get a? Motion to add, I'm gonna give a little side, okay. Uh, motion to add discussion actions on donations.
Second, motion of the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those are favor. Everybody.
Uh, the first would be, uh, to accept the donation of a hundred dollars from Joseph and Leon Corrier. Just the monthly donation to support community food access. That's an amount of one hundred dollars.
So moved.
A motion of the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those are favor. That's awesome. I thought I did, I'm doing that one.
Been a long time.
Agree, since he moved here.
I was gonna say, it's been some time, but on board, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, kudos to them.
Does that fund that the food pantry? In the lobby or we're just have?
No, the food pantry kind of maintains itself. This is going into the food pantry account for future food pantry.
Yeah.
Or if there's anything that's food related, that's why we accept it broadly as community food access.
Yeah.
If we did need to fund that in the lobby or the, um, meals to go that we gave back at COVID, things like that.
Cool.
Um, that's where that's kind of sits. And it's with some money from New Balance as well.
Thanks.
What is going on with food pantry?
Nothing right now. We have actually the, we, we've gotta do something to recommend and just to thanks on check. Uh, the Winslow community cover. And I think that's under the auspices of the congressional church of Winslow, but every two weeks, so for second, fourth, Saturday, month there, it'll stream. With a pickup, they come to the trailer and they give away a lot of the stuff, so.
Oh, that's great.
Anyway, uh, the next donation to accept is a grant of two thousand dollars from the United Way Heart of Maine for healing assistance.
So moved.
Second, motion of the second, any further discussion?
Uh, this will be administered like the last batch was, we received a hundred, uh, one thousand dollars from them earlier this year. Uh, if you're over sixty-five and have road to green, we have a simple application. We don't ask any income related information. Uh, we ask for your heating company and your provider. Um, and then pretty much we call and ask, do they have a balance? And if they don't, uh, we distribute the best that we can for the number of people in the house and whatnot. So.
Did you have takers for the last ones?
It was only a house of bucks, so I didn't go very far.
But you did have someone.
Yep, we, I think we awarded six or seven different.
That's great.
Yeah, it's nice when you have a little bit of personal stuff to, those are the circumstances. Anyway, so if we could, we'll leave that one open probably for another thirty days or so, help people out right now. No, turn around. Okay, that's a motion to accept that, please. Oh, we have a motion in the second.
Okay, motion of the second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those are favor. Everybody. Anything else? Anything else? Uh.
Just second.
Uh, yep, sorry. So you have freedom of access. Freedom of access act, frequently asked question, bullets. If you went through a break, you can sign off such as, but if not, you can see that back on the media's. There's no consequence, so. But please do it.
Would you want each year?
Caveat, yeah.
All right, then I move to adjourn.
Okay, same. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those are favor.
Wow, I finally got rid of those last two, so like this meeting.